Is the, to renew the support agreement with Unitrans and that's at cost of 24.96.
Mr. President, I make a motion to re- renew integrity of work solutions for the amount of 24.96 and this is just a year prior.
This is before and for the annual.
What's the frame on it?
I think April.
Okay, expiring 33.
Yeah, the quote expires.
Yes, the bullet point quote.
Here we have a motion, second on the floor for the renewal in this case. Hearing none, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Those?
Those who passes.
Okay, that was easy. Okay, our network right now is about 10 years old. We, it was refreshed back in the summer of 2010. So it's coming up on 2020 summer, so everything we have in our whole network is actually 10 years old. So in this project here, there's a lot of contingencies on this. This is going to be E-rate fundable project. We are bidding for E-rate. I'll be, I explained as much as I could in the actual, in the piece of paper I sent you guys. But just so you know, if for some reason the E-rate funding does not come through, this will be annoying, but this is all basis, basic on or contingent on the fact that the E-rate funding is, is always supported on this. So we are in year five of our E-rate cycle, so I want you to get that spreadsheet as well. So in column B on that spreadsheet, there's 199,725 and 90 cents available this year. So if we don't file for this, we don't get it. It goes away. We do get another set of monies next year for another five years as well, but this is the last of this five-year cycle for this monies. And how E-rate is determined for, for funding, they look at our membership enrollment numbers each year and then base that number on the dollar amounts. But those dollar amounts we get are based on the numbers. So we have a qualifier, 80% funding, and this is a quick thing called category two refresh. So network equipment is considered category two stuff. We did this three years ago with the, with the wireless network. We're not as good, you're filing year one of the cycle, so this is year five, so. Yeah, so basically, and it's basically broken down by building level as well. So if you look in that spreadsheet, you see column, in rows 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, you see each building level has a certain amount of dollars other than 6 and 7. The corp office and the transportation building, technically they'll have the education, so we might need to find it for those buildings. So any network that's refreshed in this building and then the transportation building is 100% on us. And then the other buildings, you can see in column B, what's allotted for each particular building. And then they will fund 80% of that particular cost of what we use and spend on it. So obviously, if you look at the, at the Camden and at the elementary, we don't use all those monies, so we're not getting full funding for those. But at the high school, middle school, and, and high school, middle school, we do go over the, over that funding. So we have to, we are responsible for 100% of what we go over that was allotted. So, so if you look at the corporation costs on, on column R on the spreadsheet, those are basically the costs that we will incur for this project.
What's that now?
Total amount is 16.
Which one?
60,733,23.
And we did get two quotes. So what we had to do is we had to file what they call an RFD, Requested Proposal, RFD, RFD. And so we did file out Form 470 out to the world and we did request those RFDs that vendors be local in the state of Indiana. At least that would carry more weight in, in our decision to make. So we did get back two quotes. One was integrity and the other one was Rowan Corporation. And there was quite a big difference between the two. So we had to qualify, I had to go through and basically rate each company and buy this, that, and the other. And it was such a big discrepancy in costs that I had to go with Rowan. And we using the board as well.
In the time you've been here, has E-rate ever not made funds available?
No.
So it's always been there?
Yeah, so the deadline to file is March 29th. So we have to have a signed, signed quote by Rowan to ad tech. You guys remember Charlie Hobbs, he's been here a while. I remember Charlie, Charlie's our ad tech accountant. So I have to have a signed thing to him by, he's requesting by this week. File by March, usually the funding does not come in until September timeframe, maybe October. And then once the funding comes in, that's when Rowan will start purchasing and wearing everything then. So we will wait until the funding comes in first. That's also, you can see in our, in our RFP on the, Charlie. Any questions about the, this? Also included in this refresh project is the camera system network as well. Our camera system is separate from our data system network. So the switches that, that are on a camera system, they're also part of this. So I don't know how that works with, with other grants, security grants.
There are none.
Okay, there are none, okay. So that is included in here as well, the camera system network, not the server system network, which is ours.
Do we gain any capacity out of this bandwidth wise or are we just staying where we are through the network or?
We're getting to the point now where, and I, we had a second RFP I wrote for the cabling, because our cable, Cat 5 cable in our school corporation, I think was wired back in 97, I believe. Dick Randall was the, was the guy here back when they used 10 high school kids. We're getting to the point where that Cat 5 capacity is around a gig and these ports, I believe, are going to be upwards of 10 gig. So our bottleneck is now of the cabling. Question came up in this, with the meeting with other vendors was how many people actually using more than one gig of data to a certain drop at a computer? So my next step will really be just a wireless network access points. I will probably re- re- apply next year for the E-rate to do just the wireless when you have multiple devices on one access point. And then that way the bandwidth will be able, will be greater to those access points. But a certain desktop, you're not going to be able to do. So we're, we're fine there, but yeah, the data will go faster. And we are switching from Cisco to Ruckus, which is a less expensive, but just as high quality on the end here. The people who switch to Ruckus know this difference. Cisco is just like Cadillac, but it's expensive. And as we've been with them forever, we'll tell you some of that danger. But our wireless is Ruckus. It was a lot, it was a lot better upgrade from the Cisco and these we had.
Do you need, do you need a motion to proceed?
Yeah, we just need the, the quotes signed and, and so we could file.
You, you approve the Unitrans, so right now you'd be approving the Rowan network upgrade?
Yeah, for that 60,000.
Contingent upon receiving the.
Yes.
Do you hear motion? Make a motion to allow. Refresh contingent upon the E-rate fund being available. Second?
Do we need to add a dollar man into the, to the motion? So Steve, if you allow modification, E-rate funds, we should expect it's 199,722.
That's what's available. What we'll be filing for is 8% of each one of the buildings.
So under your corporation cost, the 60,733. That's maximum?
That's maximum we hold to yet against.
So can we modify that to a maximum of 60,000?
The actual quote, the overall quote is 195,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the actual, this is the quote from Rowan, 195, 186. But E-rate will cover most of that. All but 60,733.
I'm making my motion to include a maximum corporation cost of 60,733 and 23 cents. Here we have a motion, second on the floor to approve the Rowan upgrade as presented. Any other discussion on that item?
I got questions. Will we be able, since it is security and in our big bond, we have security in that, would that be able to maybe transfer to pay out there? I mean, it's not nothing that David had to, but that might be.
Well, we're, we have in the budget, operations budget, technology money, so we should, we should be all right.
Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye. Any votes? Hearing none, the motion passes. C, permission to advertise for bids for bread and commodities.
I'm not sure I understand all the rules of the school nutrition program, but they require that the school board give the school nutrition director permission to advertise for bids for bread and commodities. So that's what we need, just an approval for her to advertise for this.
We have a motion, second, for permission to advertise for bids for bread and commodities. Any discussion on that item?
We just approved it.
That was a co-op, that was everything but.
Everything but the bread.
Everything but the bread.
Got your wheat.
What I was told was bakery that they use with the co-op is not as reliable as what we can get for our bitters, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor say aye please. Opposed, motion passes. D, appointment of superintendent to attend the TIF meetings. Any about that?
Well, I, I just think it's important that, that, I know it's been hard for Gil to beat it on a lot of those meetings, so I think it would be, I think it's critical at this point that, that we have somebody that represents us and attends those meetings and begins to advocate for, for some consideration from the TIF unit for some of the things that the school corporation is doing and, and has, and has lost tax money in the process trying to do it.
Looking for a motion in a second. I would appoint the superintendent to be able to attend the TIF meetings and speak on behalf of the school corporations.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve superintendent to attend the TIF meetings if the school board represented, that are represented in the school corporation. Any discussion?
Does that need to be in a form of letter? Do we need to notify?
You don't have any voting authority there, do you?
No.
The commissioner's actually appoint. It's a recommendation to the commissioners. I learned at a commissioner's meeting, yeah.
You certainly did. So appoint a representative from the board, is that correct? So. Mr. Ron, can you do a letter to the commissioner to provide?
Okay.
Here we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye please. Opposed, motion passes. E, permission to hire Baker Tilly to create a five-year financial projection.
The, I, I think it's, it's a very difficult thing to project five years ahead within the state and, and so I think we need some professional help on this one and, and so we, I have been in discussion with Baker Tilly, they're willing to do this, the cost of this would be 25,000. There would be no, no out-of-pocket expenses, this would come. Later on this fall, we're going to refinance several of our loans. We expect to save around 90,000 and out of that 90,000, 25,000 would be charged back to doing this five-year financial projection. But the state is asking us for some very specific information and, and it's very critical that we have this information going forward.
One of our clients sitting at the board is doing this exact same thing. Baker Tilly will come in, interview department heads and other people and really come up with a really strategic plan. As I arrived here tonight, Steve's kind of talked about our wheels turning here, they will help you do that. So it's not cheap, but in the scheme of how much money you're going to spend each year on, on the project.
Motion? Make a motion to hire Baker Tilly to help us with to create a five-year financial projection, which will help us actually to set the course for the next five years plus give us the information we need for some stuff to be in that study.
Of 25,000, sorry, thank you.
Here we have a motion, a second, to hire Baker Tilly to create a five-year financial plan for 25,000. Comments, questions?
I think it's a good idea.
They, they've already frankly done some work on it, the preliminary work and, and so they would have it for us for April when we do it.
Does the board have to provide any goals or anything regarding that?
I haven't, I didn't want to go any further, but I, I will communicate that to the director.
I would anticipate you'd be part of, part of that. The other thing I'd point out, likely Mr. Ron won't be here in five years. Compared to that, you guys don't just put this on the bookshelf and forget about it. You know, I can need something you need to come back to in reference over the next.
That's a good point in the fact that, that it gives, it gives you a tool. Mrs. Gill's not the only one having birthdays, so.
Any, any other questions? Here we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye please. Opposed, motion passes. F, fee for Delphi preschool tuition.
Well, while we may not be able, are ready to exactly set what it is, I think we need to make a motion that we are going to have a charge for preschool next year. And, and I certainly would think that that a minimum charge of 100 would be, would be part of that. But we're still, still trying to get information from the state and, and other local corporations because there is so much variance in how this is done. So I, what I would like to have is a motion that the school corporation is committed to having a fee for preschool next year and it will, will involve a minimum of 100.
Mr. Ron, would you bring that back? Do you have a specific number to?
Yes, we would, we would revise it.
Whatever number we come up with of the per week.
Right. And as Mr. Byer pointed out, then we'll have to try to figure out how we are going to charge and collect those.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Delphi preschool tuition to be set at a minimum of 100 at this point. With a further review, don't mind if need to be more and upon any federal or state funding that we may get may affect that.
We have a motion, a second? Here we have a motion, a second on the floor for the fee for the preschool tuition is presented. Any discussion on that?
I just have a clarifying question. If that's the case, are we going to lock in 100 a week or is that actually a 20 per day for days that we are in school versus days out of school? You know, that's something you should have talked about, but I think that's important to know.
When you say days we are out of school?
For whatever reason. Vacation days, e-learning days are scheduled. I assume they don't participate in e-learning days.
They do participate in e-learning days. They do.
So what about other days that are calendared out?
Is that a 180-day schedule?
I was going to say, so take 20 times 180.
Based on 180 days?
Yeah, let me review the motion if that's okay. I make a motion to authorize Delphi to be able to charge for preschool tuition, a minimum of 100 per week or 20 per day, I guess, whichever. Contingent on those days or weeks that we are in school. E-learning is a day in school, so I think that'll clarify it's not on the weekend, it's not that, it's for the days actually that's, that school is in session.
180-day calendar.
Yeah, based off our school calendar.
Right, yeah.
Based off school.
It's 36 weeks.
Motion, a second on the floor, any other discussion on that item?
I'm sorry, when do we, it should be a week. Well, a lot of us have been in our own state giving us some clarity, so I would hope that maybe at the next quarter, oh yes, well, well, registration though is.
April 9.
And we don't meet before April 9. Right, right.
No, I was just trying to hear what was being said. I'm 50 now.
Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor on the preschool tuition. All in favor say aye please. Opposed, motion passes. G, resolution authorizing electronic funds transfer.
The State Board of Accounts tells us what we need and then can't seem to provide any kind of a format for, for that. So I, I thank Sam for helping me put this together, but it's a resolution authorizing electric, electronic funds transfers. And they said we need to have it in place. A lot of other school corporations don't, but, but we, we try to do what the SBOA tells us to do. So, so this is, do you have that? I don't know if it needs to be read or.
You can do it by title, woman.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a resolution authorizing electronic funds transfer payments agreed, electronic fund transfer, section 11.5.
Here we have a motion, we have a second. Here we have a motion, a second on the resolution authorized electronic funds transfer. Discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye please. Opposed, motion passes. Other business. A, classified staff hourly and salary roster. We tabled that the last meeting.
Well, I, I brought you back a, a chart that I thought would be a little clearer to you and I put the, I put the, the fact that the Fair Labor Standards Act regulates this as far as overtime and worker status for salary versus hourly workers and to, I, I don't know if you want me to get into those specifics or not, but, but it, it's, it creates criteria for a salary person and, and then versus an hourly person. A person on a 26 pay schedule isn't necessarily a salary person. So they, they would still be based on an hourly pay. If they don't work, they may not get paid. If they work extra, they don't get paid extra. So even though they're, they're still on 26 pays. And we have three employees who are considered salary and that would be Mr. Gear, Mrs. Miller, and Mrs. Rowe. And, and so, and I would suggest a motion perhaps that we add Mr. Morrow to that because he fits that, that same criteria. Let those be the four salaried employees and the rest of the classified employees would be out.
Mr. President, I'd like to bring back to the table the motion that was suspended at our board meeting regarding certified staff hourly salary roster.
Second, we have a motion, a second to bring that table item back. All in favor say aye please.
Well, we got, well, the motion is already there.
We need to amend it if we're going to.
So just real quick for you, that's the only four that we'll have as salary people funded in this group tomorrow.
And this is something, again, the State Board of Accounts requires us to advertise.
Mr. President, I move to amend the, the previous motion on this to amend it to include Mr. Greg Morrow at his salary to be, as a, as salary as double team.
Here we have a motion, a second, motion on the floor, any discussion on that?
I do have a question on Mr. Morrow, he's listed location is transportation.
That's, that's just, I mean, that's just what, how it falls with the, with the state or the state board, how they, they use those classifications. There isn't a, or, there isn't one for me.
He's also listed then under the hourly employee section.
Did I fail to take him on?
Yeah.
I apologize. Let's, actually, all of those are.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor say aye please. Opposed, motion passes. B, Carroll County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, that was also tabled. Mr. Spencer, you've waited a long time. Let's bring, let's bring the motion back up.
Mr. President, we also tabled this motion on the multi-hazard mitigation plan in February of 2020. I'd like to bring that back to the table.
Here we have a motion, a second, bring that back to the table. All in favor say aye please. Now, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I hope this will just take a couple minutes of your time. The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act 2000 required local jurisdictions to develop and maintain a multi-hazard mitigation plan to be eligible for certain federal disaster runs. In the letter that I sent with the fact that I gave an example of if you guys were looking at building a storm shelter at one of the schools, if you adopted this plan, this would allow you to apply for one of the grants under either the pre-mitigation or the hazard mitigation. Not guaranteeing that you're going to get the money, but at least you're available to get the grant. If you do not adopt the plan, then FEMA will look, when you go to submit that grant money, FEMA will look to see if Delphi School Corporation adopted the college plan. If they did not, that's strike one and usually no grants will be funded. Now, Mr. Ron did call me earlier today about a liability issue on, that somebody brought up, I believe. Two different things going right here. This is just to adopt the plan for you guys to be eligible for certain federal grants. The, the litigation issue, I reached out to the county attorney, he's talked with the county's insurance agent who is researching it right now. So I was hoping to have an answer for you guys tonight on that, but I do not. So I just want to explain that those were two separate issues that we're.
I guess one more question too is, once we sign this agreement, do we have any say over usage or anything like that?
So you guys would apply for the grant if, if you want, we'll, we'll have to wait for the notice of funding opportunities to come out to see what they're going to authorize these grants to be used for. It changes every year. So if they, if there's, if you guys are interested in a storm shelter for one of the schools and that's on the list, we can go after it. If it's not on the list and there's something else that you guys, as soon as I get to know those, I'll reach out and let you know what's, what's on those notice of funding opportunities.
I think what you was getting at, like if there's a natural disaster and people.
Yeah, I mean, we're signing up.
Where, where they stay at the school.
Yeah, I guess we're trying to understand what we're signing up for.
All you're signing up for on this part is. All you're signing up for on this part is to be eligible for the federal funding. The liability and all that, when it comes to if we're opening it up to the civilian populace to stay here if needed, that's being worked out between all those entities that I mentioned, both the county attorney and, and all them. I know, like, Carroll Schools has an agreement with the Red Cross to use the, the fieldhouse. I believe at one time, Delphi Schools had an agreement with the Red Cross. Now, I reached out to them also and might put in contact there, did not answer our phone today, so I don't know if that statement or mutually in agreement or memorandum of understanding is still standing between the Red Cross and the schools and that, but this has nothing to do with that portion that, that you're asking, I wish I could provide you a better answer.
Would the school have some say, I mean, let's say there's a tornado or something, like, would Mr. Ronk have some say in whether the gym is opened up or something? I, I think that's the concern Mr. Crosser is getting at.
I would believe he does, but I, I have to check all the Indiana code.
Okay, and then, and other concerns would be, would we, uh, would we be stuck with cleanup and all that, or does FEMA help take care of those kind of calls?
I can't answer that until I find out what.
Right, right, we're just wondering what we're saying.
No, I understand, what you're, look, if you adopt this resolution, it, it's just to be eligible for the grant funds.
But to clarify, the state and the federal government have power to.
They.
Take over our facilities, for example, if you had a train derailment and had a hazardous situation, could, could they take over our facilities in an emergency?
Whether we sign it or not.
Whether you sign this or not.
Or whether we sign any agreement or not, do they have the capability?
I would, I would hate to answer that because I'm not one hundred percent sure, but.
You're saying it doesn't matter.
I, I'm saying it doesn't matter, I don't know if you agree with.
I'm not aware of, I, I went to college in Tennessee, I know that things like that just happen, there was a tornado and schools opened their doors, but, most times, I think the school would be happy to do that.
Right, right, but I'm also being told the governor and the federal government, if, you know, they say declare a disaster, can use your facility. But you're saying this is just for, to receive FEMA grants?
This is to be eligible for FEMA grants, and this plan is, is good for five years. Uh, the last time that we had a plan that was approved by FEMA was in two thousand and ten, so a little, um, but this is gonna get us back on track, I hope, because the county and the whole other.
Put it off the table, it's back on the table, so I think you can call for the vote.
We need to move that to just, uh.
There, there's.
This is just applying to the FEMA grant or?
It's in the, it's in the plan.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion of second on the floor. All in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, uh, C, revision approval of the Weir's bus maintenance agreement.
Sure, I'll handle this, so we've had a lot of revisions to this agreement with Weir's, um, and just a couple points of clarification, um, so, as you, as the last two months, the board has approved, uh, payments to Weir's with the understanding that this agreement would eventually be approved, uh, after we've had some revisions to it, so the revisions are satisfactory to me, um, a couple of points, this caps your annual expenditures at two hundred and forty thousand dollars, except for, you know, really kind of outside, you know, blown engine or, or something like that, so, um, the, the point of clarification that, that I had though, just so all of you understand, you're not making, so two hundred and forty thousand would be twenty thousand a month, you're not making twenty thousand a month payment, it's up to that amount, and Mr. Ronk, I believe you indicated the last couple of months have been a little, slightly under that, is that correct? And then, obviously, the school's also been making payments for the back amounts, so, and that's in the range, was it thirty?
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three thousand.
One hundred and eighty thousand.
Additionally, this contract is year to year, I would point out, if you're going to approve this, I don't know who it would be, at the administration office, you have six, you have to do a sixty day notice to cancel the contract, otherwise it auto-renews, so I would suggest putting this on the agenda for either, uh, August or September to discuss with the board if you're happy with it to continue moving forward in two thousand and twenty-one.
November first is the.
Right.
So you, you say sixty days?
So that's why I suggest September, uh, September. It, it may be just having it on a monthly, just a informational item under the superintendent report, but you're how it's going. Or, Mr. Ronk, I don't know if you have any updates since.
No, they, they had to claim for this month, I think it was nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
And most importantly, the transportation department handled with the services they're, they're getting.
Yes.
Okay, we're looking for a motion.
No, I'm looking at, uh, that we approved the, uh, the fleet agreement with the Weir's bus.
We have a second? Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the revision of the Weir's bus maintenance agreement as presented, any other discussion?
Okay, I got a question for you, okay? Fixed charge, two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-one, ninety-one cents per bus, is that something we give before they even, for each bus deployed in the county last year? I don't know, it says fixed charge per bus.
On, you're looking at Schedule A there?
Yeah. So the reason I'm asking, if there's thirty-three buses, can you multiply that by two hundred and forty-five dollars, we're spending over eight thousand dollars a month before, before they do anything?
I don't believe that that is correct.
I didn't understand.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a fair question, but I, that's not.
That's what we had before, and that was a problem.
Right.
Yeah.
They get a fixed rate on, on everything, and so we paid that, that was a monthly charge, uh, whether we did anything to that bus or not.
I see what you're saying, right. So, is that showing up right now, Mr. Ronk, in the monthly amounts?
Need to go grab the.
Yeah, why don't you just double, I, I want you guys to feel comfortable with what, what we're signing here, so. He should have that, that's on the back page.
But is that designed to take care of all the issues monthly, and then everything above that, such as motors and that kind of stuff?
That's my, that's my understanding. Right.
That was a fee before that we got charged.
Yeah.
Plus this, everything else on top.
Nick, what would you think, can I ask, uh, under that two hundred and forty thousand in the budget, the language isn't real clear to me that we will not be, it almost makes me wonder if they can then bill us up to the two hundred and forty thousand at the end of the year as part of our agreement, that two hundred and forty is our, is our, uh, budget, is the language they use, as opposed to not to exceed the two hundred and forty thousand? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Well, I think, well, both sides are trying to, uh, obviously balance the risk there, I guess the risk to them would be if, I don't know, there's a catastrophic type of damage to something, I, I guess it's foreseeable that your costs could go over that.
Right.
So, um.
I think what you're, what you're saying is, in December, when they come up, come around in December, and it's worth seventy thousand dollars under the two forty's, and they bill us up to.
No, 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 no.
Is that what you're saying, Neil?
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think this really.
Doesn't say a max.
Right.
It doesn't say a max.
Because, say, again, I think, I, I think both Mr. Ronk and I understand that as a cap, unless, again, there's, there's extraordinary expense, but the last few months, they have been coming in under that budget amount.
Yeah, they have, I'm just wondering about that end of the year when.
Right, no, right. Yeah, they don't, and I get to Neil's question, if you're at one ninety and only have twenty thousand more of expenses, they're not gonna bill an additional, thirty, twenty, thirty thousand bucks, something like that, so.
I also read in here, um, about, I'd like to see, um, five thousand dollars, uh, per visit, or is that per vehicle? Because a per visit is different from a per vehicle, right? If he comes here and he, say he needs seven, ten thousand dollars, when he's here, he can't do it.
No, that, I, I would take that to mean that he needs to get approval from Mr. Ronk, because that specifically says that in here, if they're going to do something outside, they have to get approval from Mr. Ronk.
What I'm saying is that, that visit is when they come here.
That, that would include all buses.
All buses, right, that's not per bus.
Right.
Okay, that's, I wanna, wanna make sure that it wasn't like a four and a four and a four.
Right.
Okay.
Counselor, if you'll begin me, what is that fixed charge you pay, I mean, I see the number, but I don't know what that number represents.
All right, Schedule A, per bus?
Two forty-five ninety-one per bus. Fixed charge. What, what are we getting for two forty-five ninety-one?
I, I take that to mean that general, kind of just general maintenance.
I think when originally it was created, it was supposed to be routine maintenance.
Right.
So we're not getting billed for the other, this is, for anything additional? Like routine maintenance, they're charging what, eighty, sixty-one dollars an hour? So for routine maintenance, is that in addition to the two forty-five per hour? Or is that not?
Say that again now.
Okay, it says two forty-five per bus.
Correct.
See, and then, routine maintenance, sixty-one dollars an hour, so is it two forty-five of, per bus, per month, plus sixty-one dollars an hour maintenance?
Yes.
Correct, right.
Yes.
So. Yeah, that's what it states, it states that the annual budget amounts include the summation and aggregate of monthly fixed fees, hourly labor charges, parts charges, and shop supplies, and then it tells what it was doing.
So we're paying over eight thousand dollars a month before they turn it. Right?
As a whole, yes, two hundred and some dollars a bus, just like before.
Per month.
Say it.
Well, the other piece of that, though, the, the standard labor rate is sixty-one forty-nine, and then additional services labor rate's a hundred and eighteen dollars an hour, I don't see that spelled out, what additional services, what grants set that price.
Again, I, I would interpret that to mean those items that they would have to first get approval from the superintendent to perform that.
Yeah, so like, uh, say, uh.
So then outside of.
A various repair, we'll say.
I, I would.
P and M probably is your sixty-one, everything outside P and M is a hundred and eighteen, is what I took.
I would just suggest, I mean, I, I think it's going well right now, but I don't wanna speak to Mr. Ronk, but.
Well, I mean, in comparison to where it was a year ago.
Right. Um, I, I guess I would suggest too to just, either Mr. Ronk or maybe the board, just watch your monthly invoices to make sure that.
And I guess it's like this, uh, come August, if we sit here and we churn it over some more, we can get out of it in, in that timeframe, right? It's not a.
Correct, but I would suggest putting this on the agenda to discuss, right?
Right. But that, I mean, I, I'm gonna sit and say that charge is nothing but a charge, and then we're paying labor and repairs on top of that, just like we did before. We've had a fee before, and actually, at that time, it was two different corporations being built out, but I assume, I see here just one. Where before we had two Weir's corporations we were being billed for, and so, um, that part, I, I will say that I, I believe that's the same, to be honest with Mike, that, it's a monthly charge, we get charged whether you do anything or not, and then on top of that is, then our present maintenance or whatever we do, we'll get a bill for that then, on top of that, so.
That covers all your P and M. I guess one more question is, this is saying from date of manufacture, twelve years, and we already have one bus that has exceeded that and two that are O eights, right? What, what does exceeding the twelve years?
What happens?
Yeah. I mean, does that?
It means they're getting inspected more.
Well, well, but does that void the, uh, the, the monthly charge and that we get charged for every time they work on it?
Well, we get charged every time every year.